You got it, I got it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I will call to order the Wednesday, March 12th meeting of the Town Council Study Committee. I guess the first order of business is, has everybody a chance to review the agenda? Can I have a motion to accept?
Oh, good job.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 I forgot the little, I'm not doing the remote meeting sort of script anymore. I don't, as my understanding, I don't have to, but I should remind everybody, especially all of you out there on Zoom, that we're, this meeting is recorded. So anything you say may be recorded and saved for all posterity. All right. So we've accepted the agenda. The meeting is being recorded. I'm gonna, Roman numeral four, the, my dad, I got submissions of minutes from two of our committee members, and I, I got them late this morning, so we're gonna have to add that to our list of minutes that we'll review and approve by hook or by crook at our next meeting. Article five, Jeff, you wanna give everybody a quick recap of the, your meeting with the Harbor and Shellfish Advisory Board?
Sure. So just real briefly, on our behalf, I went, they were asking the question about whether they were being recommended to be elected or appointed, and to dispel the rumor mill, I kind of explained to them what the justification was for us recommending them to be moved from elected to appointed, and how it related to lack of candidates over time, their status as an advisory board. They didn't like it really at all, and took a vote at one point that they are asking us to reconsider keeping them as elected. They gave a lot of varying reasons, some of it related to how they all feel that collecting signatures to run kind of affirms their commitment to be on the board, and how they felt that was important, and how they felt that being elected provided a better representation than simply being appointed. I simply said I would come back to the board and let them know what they wish to remain elected, and we could take it up if we wanted to, or have a discussion, and I would let them know if anything changed, or if it was gonna go forward. The one interesting comment was from Bob DeCosta, who's on that board, who said, whether we're elected or appointed or not, is kind of small fish compared to the overall potential change in government that this would bring forward, and that they should all, so keep in mind the bigger picture of what this discussion is to. So it was really, it only lasted about 10 minutes, but.
And then they threw you out, so.
Well, it was the very end of the meeting.
They weren't a very happy group, so.
No, they were very much in favor of staying elected.
Which reminds me, if I might, that some places would be interesting to see committees that, you know, our new proposal will be appointed on one column, and the ones that are elected will stay elected in another column, just so we have two lines. I keep trying to figure out who's what where, and trying to find it. So that would be an interesting chart, which affects the force of the water commission and potentially a sewer commission.
Yeah, I think some of that is in the new draft, you know, the draft charter. But I don't, but I honestly don't remember, so I just wrap myself in that. I'll see if we can.
Well, I was just thinking, one piece of paper, left and right, elected, appointed, and go through all of the things, like income, ways and means and all that stuff.
Well, do we wanna discuss the Harbor and Shellfish Advisory Board, you know, request? I don't, I personally don't really care. And I think they were made appointed based on the Collins Center's sort of, there was, there was a document that talked about whatever two terms, but it was the kind of things that you would have appointed groups for, the kind of things you'd have elected groups for.
That's why I'd like a chart, because I'd like to see if it's, if the shellfish advisory fits into the makes sense to appoint or makes sense to elect.
Well, I think we, I think we changed it, I'm sorry, Ben.
I didn't. I think based on that time, we had, especially with guidance from Jeff, not knowing as much, we felt they were more in the advisory bucket, but I'm sort of a jealous, they're really that opposed and want to stay elected? I'm not sure it's really.
Yeah, it was, it was the lack of candidates, wasn't it?
Yeah, they were the only one that didn't beat that one-to-one ratio that we discussed, but.
So they wanna keep it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a beef on it. I mean, isn't the same group, the same six guys, sorry.
Sort of on the, on the board for.
They actually had a pretty good amount of turnover. They roll over quite a bit.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but they also are probably the one of the elected that is frequently populated by writing campaigns for, for folks too. But like I said, I, I think if they feel that strongly about it, I mean, if no one runs, they would fall into that bucket of that get appointed by anyways, so.
I mean, I, I think our philosophy all along has been, you know, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. You know, why not try to keep things as, as, as the same as possible? And if they really feel that strongly about it, I mean, all of these, all of these administrative or structural things, if the town council were to come into existence, they can always deal with them after that.
Yeah, okay. Well, do you want me to note, well, I'll let them know, let's have someone for mine.
Heard what they had to say.
Yeah.
And it's good, you know, someone will say, hey, they listen to us.
Yeah, and then I can also reach out to the Collins Center, ask them if they could move that back into the elected bucket in the draft charter.
That actually probably provides a good segue. I had a meeting with Libby week, last Friday, and really wasn't too much, all that new and exciting. The one thing I did ask her was whether the town would be willing to give us a few more shekels to pay the Collins Center since we've used up our $34,000 budgeted amount. Libby was basically okay with that. He asked me, how much do you need? I said, I don't know, three, four, $5,000. So I've asked Anthony to sort of come up with a, I think it's like a contract modification, and something we can get to Libby and Brian Turbin, get ourselves a little more money so that we can, don't have to feel we're imposing on the investment for positive ends, so.
Well, I'd like to have enough to get that, you know, get rid of the reg and have two documents, town and county charter, and why not go to KP?
Okay. Number six, Jeff and I, I'm not sure if everyone knows, but the Nantucket Civic League had a town, town governance forum last Saturday. Jeff and I participated as representatives of this body. It was about, actually it was about a two-hour sort of Q and A and discussion of the, very fun of the things that was interesting. They brought this woman, Mandy Jo.
Henneke.
Pretty cool. She, who was a town councillor in Amherst. She was also a representative town meeting member in Amherst prior to the conversion of town council. And the, the program basically went sort of Q and A of Mandy for about 40 minutes. Then Jeff and I kind of gave our usual little presentation, and then Scott Wilson, one of the co-presidents, asked questions of, because basically us, but I mean, some of Lucy, you had some, you made a statement. Some of the folks, some other folks.
Ted, Julie didn't move on, and then John thumped.
Yeah, Ted, I'm sorry. You know, I thought it was, I thought it was in general a pretty good discussion, people, you know, people aired their views. Ted and Lucy and the devil fellow, John, John, you know, raised their issues, and you know, I, I thought it all went very well. I think firstly, the only negative was, I think by the end of two hours, there were like five people on the.
I got seven as my high count on the, so you said 43 at one point.
Well, I think Scott said they had 47 people.
Registered.
Registered. At one of the times when I got an email, a text from you, Curtis, I looked on my sort of view of things, and it looked to me like it was 15 or something, there were.
I only saw seven.
But my high count, for what it's worth, was outside of the panelists, just in attendees, was 22. And then, that number's always a little tricky, because there are some people that came and went in there too, a couple times, whether they lost connection or however it was, so.
That's that little number at the bottom left that says.
So when you click on that, there's two, there's the panelists, and then there's the attendees. So there were panelists, right, where I think there were nine of us total, so there was Lucy, John, Ted,
Okay.
Scott and those guys, and then the other number, so I would say 20 to 25 attendees plus panels, give or take.
And then it was on YouTube as well.
Yes. Yeah.
Right, and we're, and we're, we're never gonna, I don't think we're gonna know how many people have ever watched it.
Well, you can see the number of views on YouTube, but that could be, you know, Bo watching it 100 times will count as 100 views, so.
Well, they would take my view of this, so that would.
Yeah.
Um, but no, I thought, I don't.
I thought it was really bad, and I think it's good to, like, you know, it's good to get it open in the public, and the public can ask questions, and it's good, you know.
I mean, I, I have to say though, not unlike our two, two forums that we had last fall, I mean, it's just a shame that, you know, everybody takes their time, prepares their materials, you know, makes a presentation, answers questions, and you get 22 people.
Yeah, that was disappointing.
Well, I, I think that the review was, I think if I go and look at it again, because it was a Saturday afternoon, and one of the good things about Mandy was like, she was talking about like, 20, like forums, they had, they had huge public input.
Right, well, they had, I think it was ten, actually. I think she said they did 10 forums.
They did 10 before, and then multiple ones afterward.
Yeah, okay. But it's, you know, it's still just really difficult to get people to pay attention. I mean, what can you do, right? You have to make the effort.
So keep trying. That's, so I will say for those who haven't seen it, there's a follow-up too, not to like keep pumping Lucy's tires up here. She put a nice letter to the current, and I don't know, did you send that to the INM as well? So, and maybe in this week's paper, where I felt like she did a really good job identifying some of the key questions out of that forum for people to kind of ask, start asking questions?
Well, exactly. Just to be clear, I don't care how people vote, but I, I respect your vote, but I just, I mean, I talked to a lot of people about it, and they don't know.
Yeah.
Well, that's why our info sessions are gonna be very, very important, as we proceed. Donna, your hands up?
Yes, I, I did watch it, the seminar on Saturday. I was thinking, after each presentation, maybe we should invite folks who are interested to watch our neighbor Barnstable's town council, because there seems to be, I think people are not that aware of the process, and it's, it's already, we've got Amherst who's doing it. We've got Barnstable who's doing it, and there are other town councils. So I think that will dispel some unknowns, if people actually watch how town council works. I think that might answer some of the questions that have been raised recently.
Right, yeah. We could post some of the connections for Barnstable and the dates. Oh, well, they're on YouTube, so you can go in any time.
Yep.
I just wanna say, I watched it, I thought having the Amherst councillor was extremely helpful, because we've talked about a lot of the provisions, but she was able to talk about it in a real-life example.
Yeah.
And there was three things that sort of came up that I, I don't, I wasn't sure if it was in ours, that maybe we might wanna consider looking at in our charter. And one was that they have it in their charter about the finance committee and what the makeup is. So they had the five councillors and the three, I would call them at-large, but they said non-voters, and I was still unsure if that was non-voters, because they were not councillors, or non-voters, because they weren't registered voters.
I understood that as they were voters, but they were registered voters, but not, not voters on the committee.
That's what I thought too, but I think that term got confusing to some people during the forum. So, I mean, again, I don't, we don't wanna put something in there that other people who are in these committees don't want. But the one thing that I did like is that they had it in their charter, that all the votes that were done by the council had to be posted online by a certain time. And I liked that concept, so if they make a decision at the meeting, and, you know, five people vote this way, and four vote this way, at least it's there so people know what the vote was without having to wait for the minutes or re-watch it. I just don't see how or where that could go anywhere in what we have. But my other thought on that was, that might be something in the transition that goes into the bylaws, so that it's not in the actual charter, but just something for consideration.
What was your third item?
Oh, um, was it, was it, um, the moderator, Scott? He said there was no opportunity for large debates like the Island Home or other things like that happens at town meeting floor. And there is an opportunity for people to do that. They just don't vote at the end, but there is a provision in there, and we have it. Can't remember if it was about 200, is that what he said? And then they could call something like that. So I don't necessarily think that large debate in public would go away. I think that there would be opportunity, if there was something that big, that the councillors, if they were doing things respectfully and wanting the public input, they would do that. And if they weren't, then obviously there's a bigger problem there.
Well, I think a couple of those answers, they've been saying that in, in our future info sessions, we do need to talk about some of the characteristics that are built into the charter that we've already drafted, and some of those public input options, I guess you might call them. I mean, they're, they get a little dry, but.
Like, we debated the number, we said 200, and if we get a lot of pushback in the community, they might say, we only want 50. That might be something we just take into consideration. But if they don't know about it, they can't.
I think, I think that also speaks to kind of your middle comment, where if part of the, you know, citizen participation then, for lack of better terms, overturning a decision of the council, I think that really memorializing that those votes and decisions need to be posted in a timely manner, because if that clock starts ticking
Yeah.
for citizen involvement, I think you would wanna say that you have, you know, 24 hours to post your vote, and that's when that clock starts, not we sat on it and didn't put it out for public consumption for a week, and oh, lo and behold, like, I think you wanna make sure that you're safeguarding this.
Of the clerk of the council, you know, everyone's talking about the importance of the clerk, and that would be the clerk's function to post the results of the meeting on a timely basis. That clerk is critical to the functioning of the council. If you look at Barnstable, that person prepares the agenda issue more than the town manager. The town manager is there, but the clerk is really the eyes, ears, and
They're the candor of information.
Yeah, yeah. No, and I think, I think that, I agree with you, because I think that role is important, and it's gotta be separate than the town clerk.
Oh, definitely, yeah. It's a clerk of the council, it's pretty much in all the stuff I read.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Doc?
Yeah, um, the audio is going in and out, but I apologize if I'm speaking again about something, but um, during that session, the idea of the non-voting taxpayers being involved in the government with a voice of approve or not approve, I think is something to be considered. Non-voting taxpayers on Nantucket are very much advocates of town council, for one thing. For another, is of our membership of 30 people, we have, we offer legal, financial, and other resources that would be helpful to the government, to the town of Nantucket as we move along. So I, I did want clarification on that when Mandy was talking about non-voting taxpayers. I thought that meant folks who were involved but could not vote. But I think, Rachel, you thought it was something else, or did I miss that in the audio?
He was discussing, you might remember, she was discussing the finance committee, and said they have five from the council and three non-voting. I originally interpreted that as non-voting, because they weren't councillors. And then later on, somebody asked the same sort of, similar referenced question, and she clarified that they do have a very large portion of non-voting registered, red, you know what I mean, residents. But I didn't get the impression that it was non-voting residents on the committee. It was just, I don't think it mattered if they were or not.
Well, still, that's a key point.
So there were, you think she meant that there were, what was it, five members of the, of the town council who were voting members of the finance committee, plus three non-town councillors who couldn't vote on that?
They were residents, but they were not non-voting taxpayers. They were residents, but they were not on the committee, and they said, and that's the way I heard it.
Actually, differently, because she, because she later referenced the fact that they had a lot of non-voting taxpayers in their student body and in their unregistered citizens. So I thought she had used that to categorize those three. And she said they were advisory, and they talked quite a bit.
Yeah.
Let's reach out.
And.
And their committee charge is, it just simply says, three non-voting members who are residents, so I think it just happened to be a resident, however.
My whole point, registered voters.
Defines resident.
Well, it's still an opportunity for non-voting taxpayers to, to sit on committees, and we've already discussed that, to sit on committees, not to be able to vote. But I think that's a good example that was set forth by Mandy. They can approve or disapprove. It's still giving some of our population an opportunity to, to be involved and to have some sort of a voice without disrupting everything else.
Fair enough.
I just like.
Doc, you've been a tireless advocate, so.
No, I, I, I just like the fact that whether they were registered voters or not, they had non-councillors on a committee, talking about finance. I just, I liked that part.
Okay. We done with the Nantucket Civic League event?
I know I came late, I apologize, but you guys did a good job.
We've already told them that.
I'll never get out the door. All right. I, I guess before we get to the next one, which is to talk about some of the open issues on the two draft charters, what is, the, the last meeting, I assume that you did some of this, are these, this, this draft charter, which is, I think, March, dated March 5th, was the last one I got from Anthony, is this? Do we know whether this incorporates all the changes that you guys discussed the last meeting? That's what I just thought about someplace? It does, but we left off salaries, I believe, when I was part of the last meeting. We left on salaries to further this discussion on.
Well, my, my minutes rambled around salaries.
Yeah, we talked about it a lot.
Ranges, yeah.
Do we wanna pick that up then? Talk about, I mean, because, because I read this, there was the salaries, and then there was the, the election dates. For like, seemed to me to be the only unfinded issues, at least from the Collins Center. Maybe there are other things that we haven't decided, but. So I, I'd be happy if we wanna, we wanna pick up the whole salary issue and try to come to a conclusion, or did you guys, do you think you guys came to a conclusion last night?
I thought we did, that we settled on numbers.
I thought.
Members and the chair.
Yeah, I think without input from the folks that were absent, I think the group that was here, I feel like we came around like 40 for each councillor, and then some additional for whatever the president. But I think we also said, well, could also wait and hear from those who were absent, because I think there was just a small group of us for that.
And then there was the thing about the value of health benefits being worth 20 grand on top of that. I think Jeremy mentioned it.
That's worth what it's worth.
Because if you're over 65, we're not gonna pay it.
I think we just prevented that from being part of the calculation.
I mean, for what it's worth, I mean, I'm fine with, with a, I think it's gonna appear fairly generous compared to other communities in the state, but given Nantucket, the workload and the cost of living out here, I'm fine with it, 40 grand, and then some sort of a premium for the presidents, so.
20%, 50% for the fashion.
Yeah, so about five, but.
Well, you know, I, I'm not at the 40 level. I'm, I'm an 18 to 24, based on what we currently pay. I'm not gonna argue. I'm, I'm a man with a team.
I also think, but I also think that this is gonna be one of the, one of the issues, if we hold a couple more forums, we're gonna get some public feedback, and I, I would think 40 grand is gonna shock some people, but I think it's worth a shot, so.
Well, also, can we afford that?
Well, the $300 million budget every month is whatever.
I don't, I don't know if that answers the question, whether we can.
But that's the answer everyone's giving.
I know, but I think we should put that question to somebody who can answer.
Well, I mean, I know I was speaking with Jill, and she's not here. I know Jill was a large advocate for a higher number, and she was sort of referencing her own knowledge of the budget, the capital, and things like that.
That's true. In fact, I think she did make mention of her opinion was that the town could afford it, not that you had to.
I mean, you know, $360,000 in salary, not counting the, those people who get, who may or may not qualify to have a health benefit. You know, I, again, I'm an ex-income person, but Brian will squawk, but he'll find the money.
I mean, I think there, there's other things that go into that consideration too, right? Like town meeting in and of itself is expensive, right? Just to have the AV support, the digital voting, printing and publication of the warrants. I mean, each town meeting in and of itself is.
It's on tonight's budget, if you look.
Is for what it's.
70 grand just to get the warrant printed.
Yeah, so I mean, each town meeting itself is like 100 grand, so in theory, I know it's not apples to apples, but I, I think there are enough people involved with the town budgeting process, that if you knew a number that you needed to come up with, that there are ways to it's, find a number like $360,000 or 365, whatever it ends up being, with all of them to, to do.
Let me ask this, if we say 40 base, and then there are gonna be public discussions, there may be some feedback. I don't know if there's gonna be feedback from current administration, current select board members. So we put a number out there and let it be the bounce number. Is that really what you're saying?
Or, yeah, I think that's one way to go about it, or say, you know, we, we suggest a starting base salary per councillor of 40 grand, and we'll let the town councillors, when they elect somebody to be president, decide whether they wanna have a premium stipend for the president.
And after the first one, it's, it's up to them, so. I would say too, Ray, if, if it's a number that's adopted by the town and by charter, and then approved by the state, and then by the voters again, you have to find the money. It's not a choice anymore, right? Like, it, it is what it is. I mean, if that means you gotta hike up the belt and suspenders a little bit to find it, what the charter demands, so you kind of expense, number one, is to make sure that you can pay those folks.
Actually, I'm, I'm, a minute's more mulling. Maybe it is better to say 40 grand, and then let's pick up premium for the president. I mean, 45, you wanna go 50? Probably 50.
You can run from 40 and 50, or 45 and 55.
I think the chair of the select board does a lot of work. Well, as Brooke said, full-time job, when she.
Well, it's a foyer, so. Well, it's a four-year, so, yeah, everybody else spends twenty to thirty years. Jeremy, I see your hands up.
I, I was just, I want to suggest everyone remember that one of the reasons. For having a different pricing structure or, or compensation structure than presently exists. Is to induce people, induce nine people, more than nine people to run for these positions.
I can't help but point out that. That which motivates those nine people will be different than what motivates people when they go to town meeting. I mean, I know we're beyond that, but. Um, just thinking, I mean, as a psychologist, I think about what motivates people and to be, motivates people to be civic and. Um, contributory and to work hard, and I just, I am interested still in. That difference, the difference in the type of person, personality and character that will. Um, that we want to attract and how to communicate that message. In other ways, besides just the amount of money that we're gonna pay them. I think it would be good for our committee to come up with a statement, because I know, Joe, you have referenced. Um, you've, you've often said, if we're paying someone, then they are going to be a professional by virtue of being paid. And that comes with responsibilities, and we can expect that person to meet those responsibilities. Um, but I think it would be nice for our committee to write up a statement about. The character, the motivations that go into those roles as counselors.
They were sort of, that would have to be sort of aspirational, right, I mean, the reality is, you have no idea, I mean, who's gonna run, right, off.
Of course.
And you could get, you could get someone fantastic, you could get.
But I think it would be good for our committee to make mention of it and just put it down in writing as an aspirational. Thing that we are thinking about, because it is one of, in my mind, one of the biggest differences between town meeting. And the town council is that which motivates the people to be involved in a legislative process. And since we're going to a much smaller number, I think it would be good for our committee to tend to that with some kind of commentary.
Think that's an excellent piece for our final report.
Alright, so forty base, fifty for the, for the um, president, so.
And after that first year, like I said, it's gonna be up to them, they feel like it needs to be adjusted.
Okay, um, I think, I think that's big enough, the moment is enough saying that we ought to memorialize that with a vote, so um, kind of a motion to.
Sure, some of.
Secondly, forty and fifty, okay, uh, all in favor?
Well, I think we gotta go around, because we got.
We probably have a, yeah.
We got Jeremy as the finance committee.
Can I have your high or nay?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, there were no nays, so. Um, okay, the other thing that seems to be in the um. The charter, the same like is, is this issue of the date of the election. Rather the, I guess you, you, you said like the second Tuesday.
Town clerk give us some, well, reasons someplace.
Yeah, you know, um, I know Nancy had some issues about when she thought it ma- makes, made sense, as well as. The issue about how many weeks uh, needed between availability of papers that can't, at the end of that. Draw period and the election, it struck me that, at least what I remembered was, she needed, I thought it was. Two and a half months between pulling papers on the election. But the other thing I don't understand, and this is one of the, one of the question really, but a Collins Center. Why is this something that's, has to be written in the, in the charter right now, why can't you, why can't this be a detail and sort of gets? You know, you, you sort of adopt this and then you figure it, okay, it's the second Tuesday, it's the third Tuesday, whatever the heck it might be. I don't understand why we have to pick these days, fuck.
My understanding was that it had something to do with legislative. Movement and that, depending on where we put those states, it would totally change, like a whole calendar, calendar year worth of legislative bodies, so. I think it's, it's, it's for us to author because we know about our town rhythms and things, that's how I understood.
Well, and then it wasn't the other issue about the town counselors, that either, either the full, all nine of them or. Each year's three that are up for election. You either wanted to elect them early enough that they could participate in the budget process or. Elect them late enough so that their predecessors dealt with the budget and they sort of came out almost at the end of the fiscal year. And, you know, just sort of took their seats and the budget are already been approved.
So it was September or?
No, I thought they were all, I. Give me if I, if I get it, I mean, I thought this was all sometime between sort of April and June thirty, June thirty is the end of the fiscal year. That's my understanding. Um, and we vote now in May. Our local elections in this.
Sorry, for some reason, I can't hear you any longer.
I can't either.
It sounded very muffled. Little bit.
Yes.
Good, good.
That one's good.
Can you hear now?
Yes, thank you.
I can hear.
I can hear now. Also, your images are very um, vague, they're not clearly defined.
I'm sorry, Bo, you were gonna say something?
I thought this, as I recall, this was like a state issue.
Well, I think we couldn't be in the fall.
Couldn't be in the fall, but we couldn't be in the budget season either, Edward and I, but it'd be before the budget season.
Right, right, I think lo- local, I think the thing was local elections can't be in the fall, because then they conflict with state and national elections. So we've always had elections in the spring and the current cycle has been a week or two after town meeting, which I guess would make it the. Third Monday in May moment, and I don't know what the date of the election is for this year, but.
But if we don't have town meeting, we can set any date we want.
Well, except that that election is the election of select board members and other elected bodies, not, not just, I mean, and then ultimately town.
Yeah.
I mean, I get, I guess, I think there's two ways we could approach this, one, we could say the third, the third Tuesday in May. And then back up two and a half months to whatever April.
For the paper, pulling.
For the paper, pay for those, those are the two things we have to define in the charter. We can just, or we can just take that third week, third Tuesday in May and whatever two and a half months is before that. Stick that in there and then if that conflicts with what Nancy really wants. I mean, I gotta believe KP Law, right, KP Law, somebody can fix it, I mean, it's not, this isn't. Alright, I, I mean, I, I like that, I think, why not just take a practical.
I will say that it does conflict with Jeff's idea of it.
What?
It does conflict with Jeff's idea of the budget thing and I, I, there's some credence to that, I think. Cause right now, the charter is set up that they're supposed to adopt the budget by June first, by June fifteenth. So, so you're gonna have a new person come in and look at a budget.
But I did hear. Mandy, Joe, talk about their election was November, which they had to get a special charter for because of the state election thing. They didn't get sworn in until like a month later. So we could always have the election and then the swearing and be.
We could have the election and then maybe the swearing starts July first.
Yeah.
Right, at the start of the fiscal year.
And then the budget is done.
Right, so, so the budget is done and voted on by the predecessor counselors. Prior either, wh- whenever that, all that, that happened, and then. Yeah, I, that works for me.
Put that in and let KP Law tell us why it doesn't.
Okay, so I'm gonna put in.
I mean, I don't know what kind of transitional, I know she said that there were some things that the select board could still act on and some they had to. Hold and push off, but. I mean. That's for that transitional committee.
And again, too, right, I think this is one of those great topics where we're talking about different times for election. Put it to the masses and see if, if people have a thought when they prefer it to be tipped, and that could be another. Point that's flexible, and we know we have to have it if people think that. June is a horrible time or May is a horrible time, I, I think that's important input to get. Well, with that, I think that we've, this is done or recently done, doneish, doneish. Um, I will send this to Anthony and ask Colin to Colin Center to sort of tighten up those last three things that we, we discuss. And then um, that gives us something we can send to, obviously to the committee, we ought to take a look at it again. And then we can forward it on to Lib, to, yeah, to Libby and KP Law.
I'd like to see a complete document or two documents with no ring.
Okay, um, the, the next one, I don't, did you guys deal with the county charter last time? Yes, yeah, yeah, that was done, no worry, so, so, well, I went through and there's, there's a bunch of red in this where it's, you know. Delete section two point eight and blah, 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 um. Yeah, I think that stuff is, once they finish cleaning up the town charter, they can get those references correct, okay. And they should be able to finish that too, okay, so I, I will.
Only thing that was a question was the personnel board, we needed town council to like to.
Well, I thought that was just, I thought that was just to be deleted, because it doesn't exist.
Well, that's what we said, but I don't, I think we left that up to.
Yeah, I think that'll be another one that KP won't resolve, okay, alrighty. Um, alright, well, some of the next two things I thought we, we could talk about are um. Sort of thinking about and planning for citizen outreach, uh, we've got about four and a half, five weeks between now and. Town meeting on um, May third. And then, you know, the uh, composing the report, which I wasn't really thinking we would get done prior to special town meeting, but. The uh, I guess, did you guys discuss perhaps breaking into two, two committees to handle those issues, just briefly? Well, my, again, my thought was, there are seven or nine of us, depending on you want to count Tom and, and Jill, um. I guess eight or ten of us can, can, including Donna, um. What do you think about breaking into sort of a, a work group that deals with the info sessions and a work group that deals with writing the report and the article? Like, that's a good idea. Um, well, and I will follow up, I happen to like the idea of writing the report, um.
I'm an info person.
I'm a sort of, I like to write the report kind of guy, um, which I've, I've actually already started and um. Just because I was, I had nothing better to do the other day. Um, but I, but I think a more urgent issue is, you know, um, you know, the info sessions and. I was just looking at the calendar, um. It seems to me there's, we have the week of, week of March thirtieth, it's a Sunday. Week of April second, the week of April thirteenth, and the week of April twentieth, one of those, I think the twentieth is a vacation week. For twenty-first, so that's. And then I think, you know, but then you're running right up to the, to make their, their town meeting, so it seems to me we gotta think about. How many sessions do we want to do, where, where do we want to do them, when do we want to do them, um. I think last year we did, last fall, we did what, a weekday and a Saturday. Um, questions, whether you think we have time and energy to session every week, do we um? I mean, I think we ought to do at least one in the, at, at least one, if not two in the evening, and at least one, if not two on a Saturday, but.
That week of the twenty-first, the twenty-sixth is school vacation and that weekend is Daffodil weekend.
The week, the weekend of the nineteen twenty or the weekend of the.
First through twenty-sixth.
That is Daffodil the twenty-sixth or is Daffodil?
Twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, unless I really wrong on my calendar, which very well can be. Yeah, and I think Easter is that Monday, so there's a lot kind of going on in that week, that may.
Go into a town council study committee.
I'll come back to the question of inviting Mike Cozart to our next meeting, just to give us some thoughts about how we reach out.
Sure. Happy to have him chat, um. I can, you know, if you would like to reach out to him, that's be great, I'd be happy to.
As a chair.
Okay.
I gave you his phone numbers.
Yep. No, it's pretty much a sentence. I think as many times as we can get. People the opportunity to. Listen and then to ask questions, the better. Man, I'm not going anywhere.
So I'm happy to do Saturdays and evenings, are we gonna go to, to uh?
I thought we would do.
For fairgrounds?
Yes, yeah, just what we did the last time, to get, get that room and.
See what, see what's open, I'm sure Saturdays we can get it. When will be at the end?
Oh, yeah, um, I'm, I was gonna go to one of those sessions, um. You guys are having the Tuesday sessions.
Yeah, the articles, yeah.
Five to five.
Is that the conversation with Campbell?
Yeah.
Is it Campbell Sutton?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And she's sort of just sharing it, or how is it worded?
So she's explaining the articles, like some of the articles and people ask questions. They're very informative, I mean, like yesterday, last night we were doing, we're so named and she bought in the big map and. For people like me who don't know much, that's, it's pretty cool, we had some new younger people there last night, which is nice.
Has she paid attention to us?
I think Campbell pays attention to everything, right?
I mean, has she discussed the sense of the meeting though?
Oh, no, um, I think that was discussed three, four weeks ago, she continues on with the articles, yeah.
So she's not bringing articles, sponsors or authors, and he's, he's talking with the public.
Right, because we're at the, like, all the ones that are sponsored by the select board and they'll write them, so then. Where we do the mock town meeting, they'll bring in some of the people who wrote the articles.
Mm-hmm, so for, would there be an opportunity to have the town council study committee come in? For one of those conversations, when you guys are talking about. You know, it'd be great, and then one of us could go.
Maybe just have your own night, you know, like at the Athen, not, not to confuse people.
Oh, yeah, well, I think you were referring to these meetings, right? Yes, and of course, we can all, the Athenaeum is free to use for any, anybody, um. And we could reserve our own, I, I like that idea because it's small and conversational, it's in the middle of town.
It's easier to get to in a way.
Yes, and it's not as official as fairgrounds.
And they have a mailing list as well.
Really?
We'll advertise it, so.
Wow, that's really great.
You should go jump on that podium.
I would say.
The PR person.
I think alternative locations to just the poor fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, are always a good idea.
Athenaeum is a great one.
Yeah, we didn't mean to sneak in the years, we were just.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, we did, oh, yes, we did.
Sure.
And I thought about the HA, I mean, they have a lot, they have a mailing list as well.
I think there's lots of opportunities to.
The dreamland as well.
To distribute, yeah. Donna, you had a question?
Uh, actually, I was gonna bring up the Athenaeum, but um, uh, Carolyn did, I think it's a great opportunity. The other thing is, can we prepare, and I'd like to be on the in, the info um, group. Can we prepare a chart showing what town council, how the, the town council process is? And key points, two pages, facts, whatever, and we could distribute them as soon as at the Athenaeum. Anytime we get together, the, the, the more we clarify what we're, what a town council does. And its process, I think the more we can clearly convey. The benefits of switching to town council, people can walk away with a chart that shows what it is. And then at the bottom, say, tune into Barnstable or Amherst or the others. And give the times and say, take a look, the other thing is. Take a look. The other thing is, are are we gonna put everything up on our website? The charter, for example, so we can refer people, like if you wanna study, you know, certain items. Look on our website and read the charter yourself. As well as what we discuss. Give them information in print.
Yeah, I think the idea of a of a one or two pager um, makes a lot of sense because uh, Sarah Alger did say she was gonna permit us to have a handout at town meeting. So. That's probably a task that we have to.
That would be the info group.
Report writing. I'm kind of a super nerd for stuff like this.
Oh, that's great.
So I've been keeping kind of a running list of questions that we get. So when we've had things like the civic league forum this last week. I always know for what questions have been asked before to help prepare, so. I can send that around to.
With lots of bullet points, so it's easy to visually see.
Yeah, we'll clean it up. I mean, I think a lot of them will be. Better solved, not what necessarily. Like, there are very big topics, like I think one that always comes to mind is. You know. I, as a citizen, disagree with the decision made by the council. What can I do? I think that lends itself really well to a. Really easy graphic that says, this is exactly what you can do. These are the steps, and this is how you. Those are easy graphics to put together.
If I'm a citizen and I disagree with the select board, what do I do now?
I would say more petition in legislature through citizen war.
I can't hear you. See how you bang your head against the wall.
There are avenues to deal with. Alright, well.
Mister Chair, I have to excuse myself.
So. I think we need, I I think we need to this afternoon decide on um. Sounds to me like it's it's three info sessions um. Man, I'm happy to go back to Libby and I can't remember the woman who was who. Assigns the four fairgrounds room, but you know, I I can get the room, but. What do we think? Two evenings during the week and a Saturday morning?
And can we do one at Sherburne, one at Fairgrounds and one at Athenaeum?
We'll do two at Athenaeum, at least. That's a great central place.
So we do. Two at Athenaeum.
There's never really posted anything political out there, but I don't think I don't know.
So maybe more appropriate to do it.
That might be, I might have to. Run that by my executive committee.
The Athenaeum, I think, is easy. Yeah. I mean, Sherwood Commons has the space, but it's sort of. Well, and I think there's, there's also a really interesting opportunity and not to. Steal ideas, but it's really what we do is. I think seeing what's going on, things with like the master plan where they are delivering these kits for, I know they call them like kitchen conversations and all of those. I think if we developed good materials or even offered to say you can have someone come and. Kind of host and participate that and offer for. Anyone to kind of have one of those conversations and. Small groups of people wanting to get ten people together and have a chat, I think is. Super nice, like I think. I think there are groups that would be interested. I think there are other groups that just to kind of hear what's going on that are politically active, that may be interested in. Having something for their varying memberships, even if it's short. If people are interested in you create the opportunity, I think there will be. People that take advantage of it.
I know the um. NCEA or the Senior Center has brought like select board members there, I think, too. So they might be willing to be a location. So that could be an alternative one as well.
So what what day did we, we said Tuesdays we would do it?
But I don't think we did, but I don't know.
Okay, and I'll call the Athenaeum and find out.
Do you, do you want me to do the four fairgrounds or do you want to do it?
If you could do it that.
I will do it. Okay. Actually, let, take a step back, who? Of the, well, Chris left. Who who in the room now wants to be info session subcommittee and who wants to be? Whatever you want to call the other side, report writing, um, which we maybe, or maybe we just all.
I have um. Technical ability, so I can do the. Social media. And info stuff, so. You want that? In my camp, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, too. I can do that second off, sorry.
I don't mind, but I know um. Just. Personal commitments and children, especially with. My husband coaches baseball, just I have an issue with evenings and then weekends. I I would be afraid to commit and then not be able to attend the session, but I'm willing to help in any way, any of the materials, the report, anything. I mean, I'll go if I can, but I'm afraid to commit saying I'm the one that not be able to.
So did I hear you guys are saying you can go to the info sessions?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Barring some other, I mean, without knowing the date specific. Barring some unforeseen conflict, like I said, I know I'm on islands for. A lot, okay.
So we should try to schedule them around you guys more, so.
I'll make a work whenever they.
Okay, so like, when is good for you guys? Because when I call the Athenaeum, I want to know. Evening, daytime, evening.
Yeah, evening and actually those, you know, sort of, but the weeks, the week of the thirtieth through. March thirtieth through, whatever that last week is, probably isn't gonna be a good week, but those first three of April um. I'm I'm on the island, so, yeah, I'll make whatever time, time's working, but turns out during the week, I'll just.
But it's better maybe to do.
I have a question. Is it possible to um, to include Zoom? Because then people, if they couldn't attend, could um, could participate. From their homes. Which would give us a larger audience, a potential larger audience.
Well, we we certainly.
Is that an expense or?
I think the the towns, you know, technical people can um. Support Zoom. I, if we went to the NCTV, I don't know if that that would be. I don't know if they do stuff for free or whether it's money or something.
Maybe we can always do a digital one. I know Athenaeum. Zoom is not really. An option.
So that would be the one we do at four fairgrounds.
Yeah, or the. There's. You don't have, especially with Zoom, you don't have to be in a physical location. I, in theory, could do a Zoom one from my house whenever. In my car.
Whenever, whenever it was.
Which you have done.
I I think that's the the nice part about, you could always create extra opportunities that are digital only. And you don't even have to do it hybrid. You can certainly do it, you can record them. And. Gives you a lot of options, so I mean, that's another choice, too, right? To set up our physical ones and then say we're gonna do. One digital one on this date and time.
We better do that to catch up with Amherst. They were impressive how many they had done.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think actu- actually Curtis said earlier in the meeting that um. A lot of those, you know, they said what, ten or twenty sessions, a lot of those we can do throughout the summer. Into the hall in terms of, you know, leading up to the actual. Special town meeting. Alright, well, I'll I'll certainly call the town and find out what dates are available for four fairgrounds um. We're gonna do at the name um. I can probably check on the salt marsh center too, see if that's. They have ti- times or would let us do something like that.
I think I can do that. Is there a date?
I would just say find, you know, what what days might be available over those three weeks and then we can decide whether we want to use that site or not.
Those kinds of Tuesdays already, they're doing every Tuesday, maybe we should stay away from Tuesdays so that. Um, because they're doing all meet the articles, so anybody who would come to see us on a Tuesday, they might be.
I would think Thursdays are best. Generally avoid select board.
The the other thing I wanted to suggest was we ought to consider um. Lucy Peters tour, um, writing, you know, another letter or letters to the I N M and. Current and Daybreak, um. I think it's worth sending out a a note that updates the public as to what we've been doing for the last six months and, I don't know, tells tells our story again, so. Uh, I'm I'm happy to draft one, but if anybody else wants to, I mean, I think having more of us write our own letters would be great, so.
Who else would be interested in doing that?
I'll work on the. Questions of the. Some of the graphics and stuff.
Actually, on that, I should let you know that um. Someone made a request of Maureen for uh, sort of a data dump of all the materials that the Collins Center has produced for our committee. As well as our FAQs from the two fall sessions, so. I I actually dealt with Anthony, got a list, I mean, there are about fifty pieces of paper, so that they've given us um. I boiled it down to thirty. Documents that dealt with either the the charters or some of the uh, mark, you know, sort of um. Information about the various forms of town government, that was sort of the first thing we talked, we talked about, and then the charter. And delivered that to Maureen the other day, so um. I I think I know who asked for it, but I would say. Online, so. And then the last thing I I I wanted to. Sort of um, mention is, I think we need to decide who's going to. Uh, we're gonna have an opportunity to give a little statement prior prior to the non-vinding vote. Um, and unfortunately, I am not. Available on Saturday, May third, so I was thinking of nominating Curtis. I'm gonna be in Italy, so. Libby Gibson also, she she walked off the floor with me when I told it. Sorry. But um, I was, I was actually thinking of Curtis being the primary sort of speaker followed by Jeff, but anybody.
Bo, what about you?
You schedule, I'll be there.
What about speaking?
I can do it.
Well, I mean, let's think about that for a second.
I I think it ought to be a scripted. You know, three minute statement of what we, who we are, what we've done and why we think this is a good idea. Again, but. Well, I I really thought Curtis made an awful lot of sense since it was his article. Um, and he has been a avid and um, energetic participant in all these meetings. Um, with with Jeff sort of as the. If there's a technical question, Jeff could step in and answer that question, but um. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just thinking. No, 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 I'm thinking with, I I, with all due respect to Curtis, who um. I do think of this being the face of this um. The article, of course. But I think. You know, this is expanding several year period of time and. I think it would be nice to have it not just be one man who is the article. And I think he, I I can ask him, but I think he would probably recognize that. So I think it would be nice to have. One of us do it so that it's expanded in representation across the group. And um, I've been inspired by Bo and your um. Your vision about. The town council and Jeff, I really admire how you speak in the public forum about it. With clarity and balance. So I I think either of you would be great.
I think if I might suggest, all three of you could stand up and then uh, contribute.
Well, I myself will be representing um, an article at this town meeting, so. Maybe it would be best to have.
Well, I think, let's.
Well, what I was saying is, I think it should be Jeff. And uh, Curtis. And um, and Bo. And you just decide who speaks and who doesn't. Or who chimes in and who doesn't.
I think we figure out what we're gonna say.
Yeah, I think we figure what we're gonna say. I I I also think, given this, you know, given we're gonna have a fairly limited time and we don't want to overstay our welcome. Um, it would make sense to have. All due respect to everybody. Jeff be the principal question answerer, um. Just as vice chair of the committee, um. So why don't we, obviously on the to-do list is we have to come up with. What's our little, what's our little statement? And I'm certainly gonna be right now.
Yeah, I also. Always caution too, especially because we're a little bit more mindful of it now, given the latest. Public comment procedure that the slug port have adopted. If we start switching speakers in that main time. Um, I know they are no longer interested in the whole like seeding time to people. So I would hate for someone to finish and be like, I'm gonna turn it over to this and then that caused problems. I can't imagine Sarah doing that, but I think we should. Know what we're gonna say and how we're gonna say it and then. Yeah, think about how we're gonna break that up for sure.
Jeremy, have a question or comment?
Yeah, I was just, I'm curious what Sarah is allowing us to do at town meeting in in presentation, because. Usually someone can say anything. I know last year the town was criticized for not marketing a lot of their their warrants. So and then are we just, do we have a forum where we can then respond to questions? What what is she going to let us do?
Well, she she told me that she would A, let us have a, you know, a flyer or a handout in the lobby as as various article sponsors. Um, often do. So we have to write. A one pager, if you will, uh, that one of us has to. Hand out and apparently is required to clean up after yourselves. Um, then then we have, you know, then we're gonna be given sort of three to five minutes to make a statement. Um, and she said, you know, she would probably allow a question or two from the audience, but she doesn't want this to be more than five or ten minutes, so.
That's right. I I think if if I may again, and not to to interrupt. I think if we prepare what we want to say. And get that in front of Sarah and say, this is kind of the gist of what we're planning on saying within that time window. What else is going to be allowed or is this acceptable and then? She can tell us then what. She's anticipating after reading what. What that says. And then I can make some final decisions from there.
Okay. Good. Alright, so we have some follow-up stuff to do with the with the rooms and um. I'm thinking about the, what the message, we can probably, next meeting, we can talk about what the content of. What our info sessions might be um.
I think we should put zoning on there.
Zoning meaning how it would work under town council?
That's on the question list on that.
Okay.
Otherwise, it feels like we're, this is so big and it's obviously gonna be at hand. I think it's, it would be good for us to just take the bow by the horns on that and.
Well, I thought from the, from the civic league event, it's clear that we're gonna be getting more technical and. As people think about this and learn about it, they're gonna ask about, you know, zoning or what are my options for? I don't like the vote of the town council, so we're gonna have to learn that. I think better than we do at this point.
All of us are gonna have to. Read the final charter a lot and really.
Yeah.
Have a dial. At least all of the common questions, but. Be very familiar and comfortable talking about any aspect of the proposed charter.
I'm I'm still not, I still do not have a handle on all the aspects of zoning, that feels pretty cumbersome still to me, so. It would be helpful if we could. Buff up on that as a committee.
Um, I have next meeting is March twenty sixth. Oh, yeah. I don't have really anything else on the agenda. Is there anything anyone else want, anyone wants to bring up that we haven't discussed or that we skipped over too quickly?
We allow have our marching orders now.
Alright, um, motion to adjourn then?
Did you want to take any public on?
Now, you know what I liked about Amherst as well, like, I go back to the public, you know, they had a lot of public throughout the year, and I think one of the articles you guys wrote last year, that you said you would have a lot of public input. And what I liked about their committee too, I think if I'm correct, like there was five people that voted for it and three people that voted against it, so even on the committee itself. It wasn't all one sided, which I kind of like.
Well, I thought it was interesting. I think she said that if the final vote of the town was fifty-five percent to forty-five percent, so it was not.
Because the other one, I think, lost by three, two, three votes, couple votes. I don't know, I recently watched it, so these things are actually fresh in my brain, otherwise they would not be, but I liked that too, and each. The committee had two different reports supporting. Or the commission, they they had a charter, they actually had a charter commission.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's hard, it's way harder to do.
No, I watched.
The.
Oh, yeah.
The civic one.
Because I do see in real time, so I watched it later.
They do have a lot of turnover as well, because every two years, like they seem to have a lot of turnover with the customers.
It was a bigger, they they have a pretty big council, right? I don't remember the number was fifteen, thirteen, thirteen?